Thirty seconds left, no time left.
Okay.
There's always, always more time.
Y'all set? According to our producer and director, Christopher Larson, it's seven o'clock. We are live. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one city council meeting. We're glad you're all here. We will recite our pledge of allegiance. Our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Joe Edwards following the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, we ask that you grant us wisdom in our decision-making, grace in our relationships with our fellow citizens, and remission for our sins. We ask these things in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Johns, would you like to run the meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Cook. Yes, all right. First item on the agenda is Cindy, would you please note the presence of a quorum?
Here.
He's, he might be here.
Scott Willis?
Here, I can't hear you, Cindy.
Okay, I had my mic off, sorry. Cindy Spaljeric?
Here.
Jake Gilbert?
Here.
Mike Johns?
Here.
Scott Fry?
Here.
Troy Patton?
Here.
Thank you, thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, so moved. Second.
Okay. Motion made by Joe Edwards, seconded by Troy Patton. Cindy, please call the roll.
Okay. Scott Fry?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
The next item on the docket is, or on the agenda, is the approval of the claims docket for November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Counselors, do you have any questions regarding the claims docket? Carrying none, do I have a motion to approve the claims docket for November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one?
Motion to approve the docket for November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Troy Patton, seconded by Jake Gilbert. Cindy, please call the roll.
Okay, Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
The next item on the agenda tonight is in the miscellaneous business special presentation. This evening, we have the presentation by Webster and Guarino, the, on the audit review.
Hey, I'm Will Webster with Webster and Guarino. And first, I just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here tonight, and also to want to congratulate Coach on a great victory this weekend. That was, may have been the best high school football game, I think, I've ever seen. So that was, that was pretty awesome.
Not as awesome when you're in it.
And maybe, maybe something you can explain how you get a first down on a holding clause. I still haven't quite figured that one out. But Cindy asked that we be available to address any questions the council might have about the review and to provide some brief response with respect to some allegations that were contained in the report. We provided a timeline at the last council meeting, and just wanted to let the council know that we have emails, letters, correspondence, pleadings that back up each day on that timeline. So if there's any allegation, good or bad, the council would like some more information on, we're happy to provide that. And as I mentioned to the finance committee in addressing the review, to be honest, I wasn't really sure where to begin. But I've spent a lot of time with Cindy and her staff going over each page, and I'll spare you, I won't go through each page tonight, but looking at things that were alleged, information that we believe was either misleading or false, and I can't explain the mood in some of those meetings and the expressions, as we try to kind of figure out where we go from here, but we thought it was important at least to address some of the things that were mentioned. And we're not perfect. I don't want any of my comments today to give anybody the impression that think I'm perfect, that Cindy thinks she's perfect. There's not things that we can work on. But as I went through the report, it would be hard for anyone to convince me that that review was not intentional, by design, and by direction. We went from a council asking questions about Grand Park and Grand Junction, asking for an audit, to a longstanding city attorney residing, four lawsuits. The appointment of a review team that we were told in August, and I included that letter in the packet, because I thought it was kind of important to remind us what we were promised, were experts, the best of the best, that they were going to perform an operational study of processes and procedures. We were going to do a forensic accounting review, data analysis of the city's records and financial books, and directly address the charges levied by members of the city council. But without direction, we're told, the review organically seemed to focus more so on the clerk treasurer's office, making allegations and findings that City Kim and Bev took a city vehicle to Colorado. This allegation got as much ink on the executive summary as Grand Junction and Grand Park combined. The clerk treasurer destroyed documents, which got a headline after the last council meeting. Concerns about family relationships, conflicts of interest, Cindy's great in children even made the report. Cindy sharing her password, errors occurring in the clerk's office, clerk treasurer's office email conduct, issues with P-card, Cindy and her staff's lack of presence in the office, and lack of due diligence that occurs in the clerk treasurer's office. And again, I wanted to address each one of these as we go along. But the first one I wanted to address was the clerk treasurer's staff taking the city vehicle to Colorado. I want the council to know that's completely false. It didn't happen, and I want to put that one to bed. In your packet, you'll have a statement from Kim's credit card that shows a purchase for Hertz Rent-A-Car on May eighth, two thousand and eighteen, for two eleven seventy-four, and that's the vehicle that Kim, Bev, and Cindy used to go to Colorado. Pictures were taken, fortunately on Cindy's phone, they were timestamped and geo-tagged. I've included that picture as well in the packet. On May ninth, two thousand and eighteen, Cindy's phone from Grinnell, Texas, took a picture of what appeared to be a funnel cloud forming out in the distance. What that photo did catch was the side mirror. We zoomed in on that side mirror, and you could tell in the third picture that it's a silver vehicle, not a burgundy Jeep, as alleged by the review team and certain city I also included a picture from Kim's phone, that's a close-up, or picture of the hood of the cars, or taking some pictures of the mountains. That one's timestamped, May twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. And again, that picture clearly depicts a silver-colored vehicle, again, not a red Jeep, which undeniably shows this allegation is false. This easily could have been determined by BKD. And when you look at the report, I just look at the difference in treatment. BKD goes a great length to try to insinuate this occurred. They were made aware of a conversation that occurred three years ago, by whom, we don't know. We don't know who's making this allegation, who's communicating with the review team, but this conversation's recalled. So they interviewed Mr. Stennis and Mr. Lawler multiple times, who recall the clerk's office checking out a vehicle in May of two thousand and eighteen. No one from BKD even bothered to talk to Cindy, Kim, or Bev, or conduct an interview, or ask them what happened on that trip. But the allegation was so important, this made the executive summary for the entire audience to hear at the last council meeting. BKD searches the clerk treasurer's and her staff's email, finds a conversation about a trip to Colorado, publishes those emails on the report. They do a few report analysis. They do a few report verification. No odometer reading, they say, no employee name, and they highlight a May sixteen, two thousand and eighteen entry on the few report that shows no employee and no odometer reading as the, as the evidence that this occurred. So not only are they insinuating she took a vehicle, there's also insinuation that that was concealed. And I provided a copy of that few report in there, and you can look for yourself. There's not a single odometer reading for the entire year for that vehicle. At more than one occasion, there's no employee listed as well. And I think my best part of the whole analysis is that BKD goes into a blue and green card system. They say, the only way, again, the only way that we, that a vehicle can read a zero odometer reading is if the key is set up that way. But it's funny, the next question they never ask, who has a key set up that way? Because if Cindy doesn't have a key set up that way, and if Bev doesn't have a key set up that way, and if Kim doesn't have a key set up way, then there's no way they could fuel the vehicle on May sixteenth with zero odometer reading. And I don't know if it's a lack of due diligence or intentional, but I don't know why that simple question wasn't asked, because that would have proved right there they didn't take the vehicle. We received one email on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, from the review team, asking whether she used a city vehicle for a trip to Colorado, and if so, what was the purpose? That's four hundred and forty days, if I can calculate, for Mr. Callahan's appointment. That's after the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-one request for extension, reference in the timeline. On October fifteenth, the day after I sent a response indicating the clerk did not use a city vehicle to go to Colorado, but used it for a conference in June. And I provided certificate of attendance, that was provided the review team, those are also provided in your packet. No additional follow-up or additional information was requested by BKD. So instead of discussing how the city can approve record-keeping for city vehicles, the review team elected to highlight this allegation in their executive summary, then I think to embarrass Cindy, Kim, and Bev, and then admit it was unsubstantiated. Concerns about family relationships in Cindy's office, and the two relationships they're concerned about, Cindy's daughter's Carrie, who's been an employee of the city of Westfield for fifteen years, and the other relationship is Carrie's grand, or Cindy's grandchildren. They insinuate that Cindy and her daughter Carrie could issue payments to themselves, could approve their misuse of their P-card, and in fifteen years, the SBOA has never found any issue or evidence of misconduct by Carrie and Cindy in regard to their P-card use. As much time was spent by the review team on an allegation that Cindy wrote her granddaughter a check for a hundred and forty-four dollars in two thousand and sixteen, which was outside the scope of the review than Grand Junction. And just look at the difference in issues, and this is amazing to me. We have one allegation that the city's buying property. Now, and the, another allegation is that Cindy wrote a check for a hundred and forty-four dollars. And look, again, look at the difference in treatment. The review team asked for information regarding the Grand Junction project, the properties at issue. Mr. Bertrand sends an email to, that he sent to the Indianapolis Star with some documentation attached. They review it, say it's fine, nothing to see here, which is fine. I'm glad that that's the finding. But then they disparage a reporter as unprofessional for even insinuating this, there was some issue with the purchase. And then look at the treatment with Cindy. No one even asks Cindy at all. No one calls, no one asks her about the check. They go to great length, reviewing bank records and cross-reference names. Then they list the names of her children, which I think are still published on the city's website, grandchildren. One of them is a seventeen-year-old young man who goes to Noblesville High School. And we've asked for that to be reported or removed, for those names to be redacted, and my understanding is that's still on the city's website. And then say, admit that we couldn't find the check. The P-card, you couldn't tell from the report, but from two thousand and seventeen to date, Cindy has provided every receipt the review team has asked to provide for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Her P-cards are reviewed, approved, and those reports are filed. For reasons that we're trying to figure out with Chase Bank, and hopefully some point with City IT, her P-card receipts are not located in the city drive. The only employee with those are not located in. Fortunately for us, Cindy keeps good records, provided those receipts. The BKD goes on to state that certain employees, including Carrie, have no limit on their P-cards. There's a list of employees, listed on page thirty-seven, I believe, and that's simply not true. Those employees listed have limits on their P-cards, and I provided those in your packet. There's a footnote that says that Mr. Bertrand doesn't have a P-card for the period analyzed. And again, that's not true. He has a P-card. In your packet, we provide a report, only goes back three years, but from two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and two thousand and twenty, Mr. Bertrand had a P-card. And again, I'm not insinuating, I'm not suggesting that in any way that Mr. Bertrand misuses P-card. Again, I'm just pointing out the difference in treatment. Mr. Bertrand had charges for Delta Airline tickets for eighty-five hundred dollars. He had charges for alleged CEO coaching for nine grand. We have hotel charges, we have amazon.com charges. And again, I'm not insinuating he did anything wrong with his P-card, I'm just pointing out the difference in treatment, that for Cindy, we had to provide receipts for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. If for, then, the, the review team, on the same hand, says they just missed that Mr. Bertrand didn't have a P-card. The clerk's office password sharing. And again, the review makes a finding that's when Cindy's out of town, someone logs under account, makes bank, uh, bank payments for her. Person isn't identified where that information came from. There's no explanations or question as to how someone would even know that information without monitoring Cindy's, Cindy's office. No call to clerk's office, or any effort to confirm whether this is true or not, just taken as fact. But it can't be true, because Cindy doesn't make the ACH payments and the transfers and the transfer between accounts. That's done by Carrie and Misha. They have their own accounts that they log into. So regardless of whether Cindy's out of town or not, those payments are being made by other people in her office. Out of the office and lack of due diligence. And this one's really interesting to me as well. Out of all the former employees that the review team could interview from two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, BKD decides to interview Tammy Havard. And there's no mention at all that Miss Havard was Cindy's political opponent in the last election. There's no mention of all as to, that she just, maybe there'd be any type of bias, or beware of the reader. And it just so happens that Miss Havard has all this information about Cindy Gasser in the clerk treasurer's office. She has emails, she has documents, she has screenshots of Skype, and there's no comment from BKD of why a former employee has these documentations on hand. But they simply take a statement from Miss Havard, and then state it as a finding as if it's true. For example, on page twenty-nine, Miss Havard brings an email exchange about bond payments to BKD, which BK states, make a finding, which suggests the CT office lacks understanding of fund accounting for bond payments. There's no analysis as to why that is, or hey, we looked at it, here's ways we can approve it. They just stated as fact. The SBOA has had no issues with Cindy or her office's bond accounting. There was ever brought up an issue in those regards. Errors, Miss Havard found errors and mistakes with clerk's office. No mention this was part of her duties, of her employment here at the city, that she routinely found other mistakes from other departments, but that was conveniently left out. Miss Havard provides screenshots of Skype from the clerk's office to show that her staff are out of the office. BKD doesn't ask why the city employees using Skype to monitor the clerk's office. BKD apparently has no issues that a former city employee has city emails, documents, and screenshots of Skype about other city employees in her possession. They're paying invoices twice. No discussion or analysis of how invoices are uploaded in NAV, or how its department heads indicate NAV, whether those invoices were paid or not. There's no suggestion, there's no analysis of how to make that process better, just that they're paid twice, so it's the clerk's fault. Pay utilities late. A simple call to clerk's office, staff would have provided explanation, that oftentimes they don't get utility bills on time. They pay them when they're received. And again, no analysis of why this is, or ways to improve it, not even a call to the clerk treasurer's office. The timeline, and I take issue with the timeline. I believe the timeline is intentionally misleading. It leaves out dates to imply that Cindy's not cooperating with the review team. The review team makes no mention that after getting the first correspondence from the review team, she reaches out to the review team, lets them know she's in the middle of two SBOA audits, in the middle of a budget, that we, I mean, we just went through the budget process, demands of the clerk treasurer's office. It's September, October, a tough month for her, but she'll do the best she can to get that information over to them. She makes herself available for an interview, and she provides some ADP and P-card information to the review team on October twenty-first. And I put that email in your packet. Some additional information was prior to November. In our timeline, you will see references to Mr. Klutz, who acknowledges receipt, but maybe taking issue with the format of the payroll. Also on my packet, I sent a letter, November thirtieth, to Mr. Hersag, who at the time, I believe, was part of the review team. The engagement letter indicated additional attorneys from TAF that would be working on the review. At that time, Brian Zager was still the city attorney. And again, we were talking about an issue with ADP. But in that letter, I reference a specific, it is my understanding that Cindy has provided responses to all requests, granted access to NAV, and if there are any other information needed, to contact me so I can assist and obtain any records. Cindy nor I received any additional requests or correspondence until she was sued on January fourteenth. And there's a lot that happened on January fourteenth that BKD conveniently left out of that timeline as well. Provided in your packet is an email, well, provided in the packet also, leading up to January fourteenth, is a letter that Councilman Patton received from the mayor, alleging that Cindy had not provided access to NAV, had not complied with requests. They request the council consider these matters, collaborate with him, and also notes the strict rule of communication, which, to be honest with you, I'm still not clear on what that is. And I'm not sure, again, how much collaborating happened, because Cindy was sued three days later. We were certainly never invited or provided an opportunity to meet with the administration or council. And so on January fourteenth, Cindy sends out an email expressing her surprise that the review team doesn't have access to NAV. Mr. Headen responds, and his response is important, and that's in the packet as well. He confirms Cindy gave access to NAV, and the issue with City IT was working on a connection point between the city's VPN and ours. States the review team understands, and he also suggests a date to do a data extraction, the week of the twenty-fifth, which Cindy promptly replies and says, I'm busy that week, but how's the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth look? And again, that email exchange is in your packet. Cindy is sued on January fourteenth at six thirty PM. On the same day before the lawsuit is filed, the review team acknowledged access to NAV, but the City IT had not set up the connection. And the data extraction had been, or was working on being scheduled. The timeline, to give you one example, will state, we received access to NAV on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And that's intentional, because that's after January fourteenth. That's the date after Cindy was sued, because it implies the clerk treasurer did not provide access to NAV, or that we had to sue the clerk treasurer to get access to NAV. And I provided an email, Misha provided me directly from Baker Tilly, that confirms access was given on NAV on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, for your review. An unbiased timeline would have said the clerk provided access on October fifteenth, but the review team was waiting on City IT for over ninety days to set up the portal. So that doesn't fit the narrative. See, we had to sue the clerk treasurer to get access to NAV, schedule that data extraction. So we can't have any dates in that timeline prior to January fourteenth that shows any cooperation from Cindy Gasser or her office. Then we get to the lawsuit. City's concerned about legal fees, how this looks for the city, and I think, and someone can correct me, but I think I'm the only attorney involved in all this as from this community. I was born and raised here. I care about Westfield. Cindy cares about Westfield. And our approach that, when litigation was filed, is what do you need? I don't care if we've given it to you already, we think we've given it to you already, maybe we've given it twice, what do you need? Let's get it all down on paper, let's do an agreed entry, let's get these data extraction scheduled, and let's get the review team everything they need. And I also provided those data, those agreed entries in your packet. And instead of that being a good thing, that agreed entry has been used since the day that we executed that, as again, additional proof of Cindy didn't cooperate. Look, look at everything in the agreed entry that Cindy refused to give us. We had to sue her to get it. And that agreed entry is even highlighted by Mr. Klutz in his comments in the council meeting, as one of the benefits that came out of the litigation. Fits the narrative. Again, we had to sue Cindy to make, make her cooperate. Those data extractions were scheduled February twelfth and February eighteenth. We assumed that was everything the review team needed. Get everything you need. Come to the office, anything you want to look at, anything you need, come get it. It's the second, February second, I'm sorry, February twelfth and the eighteenth. But we continued to get requests and even scheduled another data extraction, but at that time, we thought we, that was everything the review team needed. And why that's important, because I want to talk a little bit about the destruction issue. The notice of destruction was sent on January fifth. The clerk's office was sued on January fourteenth. The review team was physically in the clerk treasurer's office February twelfth and February eighteenth, had everything they needed, never requested review of the records or any boxes of clerk treasurer's office. After review was done, Cindy contacted the Department of Works. The allegation is that Department of Work employees were concerned and contacted the review team, that most, and they use the word most, of the boxes are labeled payroll, ADP, or the mayor, which again, is false. Not a single box was provided to my office with the word payroll or ADP written on it. Those boxes were taken to BDK downtown. The review team reports Cindy to the Indian Archives and Records Administration, the review team, alleging the review team had boxes in their possession, payroll, ADP. But remember, there wasn't a single box I got back that had anything written on it. Cindy sued for a second time. And the allegation is, here Cindy goes again, destroying documents. Look, got in the middle of a review, look at all these documents Cindy's trying to destroy, keep it out of the purview of the review, and that's the narrative that's being Made the executive summary, again, I think, to get a headline, which worked, fits the narrative, as I've mentioned before. But BKD fails to mention one thing. Those boxes were returned because the IARA made no uncertain terms that those documents should be returned to the clerk treasurer's office. BKD made no mention that the state agency, state agency found that the BKD should return those documents to the clerk treasurer, and that correspondence is also provided in your packet. We retrieved the boxes from TAF, they sat in my office for over a month, inspected by Ms. Poindexter and Mr. Klutz, and not a single document, not a piece of paper, was identified as needed or in interest of the review, and I don't believe it ever was. And as I'm going through this timeline, I can't help but feel there's an appearance of coordination with the litigation, and I'll give you a couple examples. The timeline in the BKD report almost mirrors the timeline in all three complaints filed by the administration, most every date. The administration starts providing email containers to the review team on January twenty-ninth, and that's just a few days before our first hearing. And I find it interesting that the letter that was given to Mr. Patton for Mr. Klutz on January eleventh makes no mention of any requests that they're waiting for from the administration. There's no mention that we're waiting for the portal to be set up. There's no mention of, hey, some follow-up on those email containers that we requested. But somehow, on January twenty-ninth, email containers are provided to the review team. I don't know if that information was requested, or if it was provided, but I think there's And if these emails were going to be reviewed by the review team, why not earlier in September, when we're allegedly waiting for the clerk treasurer? Why were we not notified that the emails, my client's emails are being reviewed, monitored while litigation is pending? And the BKD requests an extension on September, I think in September of two thousand and twenty-one, to review other matters after we filed our lawsuit. I'm not sure if that communication was provided to council. My understanding is that delay's always been blamed on the clerk's office. But no one mentioned, at least that I'm aware of, the review asked for more time to review allegations of our complaint beyond trust, veracity, which again, we're all outside the scope, but BKD wanted to make sure the comment make findings, again, without a single conversation with my client or veracity. And after the presentation, executive summary, the release from their appointment, no questions can be asked. And again, I think that's by design. And as I mentioned, there are many more inconsistencies and issues with the review, but I do thank you for taking the time and allowing me to speak here at the council meeting to address the allegations laid against the clerk treasurer's office. And if there's any, any information about any allegations, whether good or bad, feel free to contact us for any additional information. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Will. I've got one comment here, one comment. At the October twenty-fifth city council meeting, TAF, law, BKD, and Baker Tilly presented the results of a forensic audit, policies and procedures examination. This evening, Webster and Guarino, city clerk's attorney, presented a recap of the same audit. Having heard both sides of the audit process, I personally believe that the city counselors have a better insight into what has transpired. In addition, I've been asked by both the administration and the clerk to advise the city council that their auditors and attorneys are available to appear before the council if requested to answer any additional questions that the counselors might have. While by statute, further investigation is within the purview of the city council, I personally do not see any benefit to our residents to do so. While I do have questions about the mythology in the, of the audit, and the reasons associated of the, with the associated lawsuits, I am extremely pleased that no fraud or illegalities were found. It is my hope that my fellow counselors will agree that nothing has been uncovered that merits any further investigation. In my opinion, we must focus on the future, end the census bickering, and agree to work together for the betterment of our community. As one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation, we have many things to learn and improve upon, and we have improve upon, and we have many opportunities for improvement. During our October twenty-fifth council meeting, both the mayor and I noted that the Baker Tilly report provides a good roadmap for corrective actions and policies to improve the management of our city. While I do not agree with all the recommendations made by Baker Tilly, their report definitely provides a framework for procedural improvement. During the past two weeks, I have met with both the mayor and the clerk. We've discussed in very general terms the recommendations put forth in the Baker Tilly report. They have agreed that the administration, the clerk, and the council will study and implement as many of the recommendations as possible. As a first step, Mayor Cook will be meeting with the Oversight Committee on November tenth to begin the process. Following that meeting, I have asked the Oversight Committee to conduct a similar meeting with the clerk. At this time, I would like to open the floor to further discussions from my fellow counselors regarding the audit and the thought of using the Baker Tilly report as a vehicle for process improvement.
Mr. Johns, if I may, Mr. Zach Klutz from TAF Law is here, and I would like to make a statement. Mr. Klutz?
I'm not, I mean, we can do that, and I think-
Yeah, I do. Thank you.
I think, Zach Klutz, one of the appointees, my comments will be very brief, and I think will coincide with what you just said. We would agree that continuing in this format of a back and forth of what was agreeable or what's not agreeable in the reports is not in the best interest of the city or the public. But I, but I am here to extend an offer by BKD and Baker Tilly to meet individually with any of you at any time you'd like, page by page, section by section, high level, however you'd like, if you want to take them up on that offer. That's what I wanted to convey to the council tonight. They'd be happy to meet with you, meet with the mayor on an individual basis. And this week, I'll provide logistics on how you guys can schedule those if you do so. And I know they hope you take them, take them up on their offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klutz. Counselors, comments?
I have no further questions. I don't want to run up any more bills. We've already wasted plenty of taxpayer money through all this, so.
I agree with Troy.
Mayor, any comment? Moving on then, the next item on our agenda, it's old business. And we're looking at ordinance twenty-one dash five-one, which was originally ordinance twenty-one dash four-two, the additional appropriation to cover the legal fees that we've incurred this year. This had a council introduction on September twenty-seventh, on 2021, a public hearing on October eleventh. It was up for adoption, consideration on the eleventh, and that was tabled to a future meeting. This evening, we have, are open for a public hearing, but before we do, is there anyone who's going to present this ordinance? If there's someone from the administration? Okay. All right. Then I will open the Florida public hearing at seven thirty-three. Kevin, do we have cards?
We have one.
We have cards, okay. Thank you.
For the record, I'm Marla Ayler, sixteen oh two East two hundred and third street. According to BKD's report, a footnote at the bottom of page two reports that the initial scope was to end on June thirtieth, 2020. However, we know at some point the scope was expanded through December thirty-first, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, or I'm sorry, twenty-twenty. According to Mr. Webster and the clerk treasurer's office, initial requests for information from the clerk treasurer's office were largely fulfilled and received by BKD in October 2020. Once the mayor's lawsuits against the clerk treasurer's office were initiated in January 2021, a significant amount of focus was placed on what happened next and what would happen after that. The right thing to do would have been to return to this council, the finance committee or the oversight committee, the transparent action would have been to ask for direction from the fiscal body, but they didn't. What's not been mentioned is that much of the information they were wanting on or information they believed necessitated further investigation from their perspective was actually out of the scope of their investigation to begin with. On page eleven of the BKD report, the notice of destruction sent to the Indiana Archives and Records Association was detailed in the clerk treasurer's January fifth, 2021 filing that listed documents from nineteen ninety-seven to 2014. All of these documents were clearly out of scope, including the actual request to IARA, which included twenty twenty-one, not 2020. BKD was hired to provide forensic accounting services, not evidence that might have advanced the mayor's lawsuits against the clerk treasurer's office. Furthermore, IARA confirmed that no requests were received by their office for the destruction of documents during the years that were in the scope. The right thing to do would have been to acknowledge that the incident was out of scope and return to this council, the finance committee or the oversight committee to ask whether or not they had any concerns about the clerk treasurer's office destroying old documents and whether or not they should expend any time on the matter because it would cost more money. But they didn't. Shouldn't BKD be held accountable for their actions? Similarly, some of Tammy Havard's interviews and emails touch on subjects from twenty-sixteen, which also weren't in scope. Yet they chose to investigate the matters and charge the city for their time in doing so. Information received from Veracity, IIR, the lawsuits, the services of Webster and Guarino, LLP, on the subject of the clerk treasurer's granddaughter were also out of scope because they happened in 2016 or 2021, but not in the years 2017 through 2020. Despite repeated requests from the finance committee for any updates on the investigation in 2021, according to BKD, on September thirteenth, this council denied their claims. What I recall happening was you simply didn't approve the claims docket that night because you were requesting all of the bills or a greater understanding of what you, whether you in fact had them or not. As a reminder, at the time, you had only received invoices from April through July. Regardless, BKD admits they paused their investigation and blamed the delay on this council. I'm requesting that you consider denying a large part of these claims, as much of BKD's work was out of scope of the investigation and were never approved by this fiscal body. I acknowledge that services have been rendered, but by paying BKD for work that wasn't in scope is a reckless abuse of taxpayer funds, because an agreement is an agreement. In the spirit of transparency and accountability, shouldn't someone have kept the council, the finance committee, or the oversight committee up to date on the investigation as BKD got further and further away from their own defined scope? Please consider whether or not you're just granting forgiveness because no one ever asked for permission to expand the scope over the course of a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other question cards? Thank you. Counselors, questions, comments regarding this appropriation?
We will close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's, we will close the public hearing at seven thirty-eight.
I'd just like to be sure that the passage of this ordinance puts an end to this stuff. It's ridiculous.
I would agree with Joe. I actually agree with Marla. I mean, we gave them ample opportunity to let us know. I mean, that there were, that, I mean, if there were additional items or where we were, and we never heard anything. And frankly, as most of you are aware, I think it was an absolute waste of money. It was a waste of resources. I don't think a whole lot's coming out of the system, the policies and procedures, systems and processes. There are some in there, but some of them that don't even address some of the main items. I would like to make sure that, number one, that this ordinance covers all the costs, because I'm not even so sure that it's even correct in terms of the fees. And two, I think, I would agree with Marla's statement. I mean, how can, how can we ask the taxpayers to pay for something that we never even authorized or they never even asked for? That's just my personal opinion.
Excuse me, I have one question as well. I want to know what counselors have had the opportunity or taken the opportunity to schedule the time with the, with the firm and go over the invoices. Has there been?
There's going to be an Oversight Committee meeting Wednesday. I don't know whether BKD is, I would just assume, clear the air at that without them and get some, get some agreement that we can proceed without more fees and that sort of thing, because where we're going, we're just treading water there. So, you know, to, to involve them in that, you know, it was a review, and it's not an audit. An audit rests on fact, a review rests on fact and opinion. And that's the difference, and that's what we got. Now, we may not like it, but I think I agree with Troy that we're just spinning our wheels, paying lawyers to, you know, do battle in court, and I just think that's got to stop. We've got to heal up the wounds and go on. If we can't, it's going to be a pretty sad affair.
I've got, I've got one question here, and maybe someone from the city can confirm this. Are we, we've got an ordinance in front of us for seven hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars to pay for the legal expenses for the remainder of 2021. All right? Does that take into account all of our legal expenses? I know, I know, I visited the clerk's office last week. I know that BKD has not been paid their, their fees since May. So the, the retainer fees since May would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars yet outstanding. So I'm assuming that a hundred and forty thousand-
For BKD or TAF?
I'm sorry, it's TAF. I'm sorry, TAF. So that's part of TAF. So that is outstanding. So I just want to make sure, and I know that Webster has eight thousand dollars due in November and December to be paid. So my question to the city is, the seven hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars that we're asking for this evening, is this in fact enough money to cover the expenses for the remainder of this year? John, you or Todd want to-
Answer that?
John Rogers, Director of Enterprise Development. Mike, Mr. Johns, I sent you an email on Friday outlining what I thought was a shortfall. I never got a reply, and that's kind of where it stands right now.
This, John, this notice, this ordinance was, was published, it was noticed in the public?
I know, and when I-
It's something that went back until September twenty-seventh, when it was first introduced? So I imagine there was a lot of time and effort went into putting the numbers together?
Yep. And we, as I stated in the email to you, we had a additional, in the original appropriation, we had a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. That was above the administration dollars. And the new appropriation that was filled in, not by us, was ninety-eight thousand dollars. I didn't fill that number in. That's the reason I sent the email and requested some clarification.
So John, just to make sure I understand, so additional to this is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand?
Well, no.
The difference between ninety-eight and a hundred and ninety-seven?
Well, no. Actually, it's a little bit more complex than that.
I could probably clear this up pretty quick. The hundred and ninety-seven thousand that was paid out of administration as requested, it, what, we're putting that money back in, that was supposed to go back into that line into the admins' attorneys. And it was when Will sent it to, Will, you might, we, we sent it to Manny, Manny said, "Looks good," and I think you saw it, everybody thought it was fun, yeah, I think we got your email. So this is, the hundred and ninety-seven thousand was supposed to be included in this. So I don't know what you did, but it doesn't really, it's six of one, a half a dozen of the other, giving back the hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
To the admin?
To the admin, yes. You're getting your, yeah, you're getting your hundred, it's already been paid months ago. So you're getting it back.
So we really don't have any more beyond this?
I just want to be clear on something.
Okay.
Okay. There was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that was paid out of admin. I was only able to locate, to answer your question, Scott, twenty thousand that was reversed out and back to the clerk. Okay? That's my fear right now, and that's the reason I sent the request to Mr. Johns, that we have this shortfall, that I've not been able to identify where it's coming from. Because yes, those dollars have, as I tell folks all the time, the dollars left our pocket, they're gone.
It's just, it's just where they're booked to.
Exactly. And right now, there, as I see it, there's twenty thousand that got reposted correctly. There's still a hundred and seventy-seven thousand that sits in our account that does not show up in this request.
But it's already paid.
It's already paid.
But it's already paid.
Is why it doesn't show up.
But the additional appropriation would get us back to where we need to be.
You are getting it back.
Counselor Johns, can I make a suggestion? It sounds like we've got a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross. I know personally, I will consider voting for this one time and one time only, period. I'm not going to be, I'm going to be as transparent as I possibly can, and I'm going to let the taxpayers know, and I'm going to stand on what I voted for or against. And I want that to be one complete story. So I suggest, until we get all those i's dotted and t's crossed, we take no action on this.
Okay, in addition to that, I think, which part of the problem of this whole issue is, is, John, can you please come, go over to Cindy's office, sit down with her, and go through it, to make sure we have everything in the right?
I will do that.
Okay. Cindy, you're good with that? Thank you.
Cindy, what would be the time on, how long it'll take to repay the administration?
To, to what now?
You, you said, you acted as if it's imminent to repay that money, the money that John's talking about, the shortfall. When would that-
It's already, that was supposed to have been part of the three hundred and eighteen thousand, because those bills have already been paid months ago. And if what he's saying is he wants me to put it in my line and then turn around and transfer it back to them, I thought you guys had said before you want one appropriation.
We did.
Okay. Then this is what it is.
All right. So let me, let me recap where we're at then. Where we're, where we're at is we're in, we're down a rabbit hole where we have been for, for a long time, with a, with a clerk and a, and a, and a financial aspect arm of the administration that aren't talking together. This is a new day. We're, we're like, we're, we're going to have a rebirth of the city, and it's, and sometimes it's a little tough, births aren't easy, okay? But I think that what we need to do is get both of you in the same room, as Councilman Troy Patton suggested, and let's start working together this week. Let's hammer out and come back to the council in two weeks with a firm number for the remainder of this year, and this council will pass that number. But we need to know exactly what it is. And I'm putting both on both, both, on both John and Cindy to work together to get it done.
Well, I know what I need, I just need their numbers.
Cindy, no, no sense. Okay, are we in agreement? Come back in two weeks?
This, and this, this is the problem. You, you asked-
There is no problem. We're going to get it worked out, and we're going to move forward.
Yes. We will get it all worked out, but we have way too many people involved, and the communications get all mixed up. I'm sorry, is there a comment? Did somebody comment? Okay.
Andy, come on, just move on, please.
Okay.
I'm trying to sit here and move on.
I know, but your attorney did the same thing. That's what, that's the problem with the city. If you guys don't get this, your attorney's over here rolling his head, shaking his head, making, making gestures, somebody does it in the crowd, ignore them all. I don't care. Just get John and Cindy in a, in an office and figure- Just get John and Cindy in a, in an office and figure it out and move forward. It's not, I mean, let's be big boys and girls and just do it.
Troy, we can be big boys and girls. We've been working at this a long time, okay?
And everybody can see the results.
Okay. Let's, let's move on.
This is, go ahead and table, correct?
All right. Okay. The next item.
Final action on that.
Motion, Mr. Johns, if you wanna, or Mr. Frye, if you want a table, do you wanna? Make a motion, can I have a motion to table ordinance?
And what is the appropriate step with that?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is the appropriate step to table that for today?
Of course it is.
Then I would like to make a motion that we table this ordinance, uh, twenty-one dash fifty-one.
Second.
Motion has been made to table ordinance twenty-one fifty-one by Sky Frye, seconded by Troy Patton. Cindy, would you call the roll, please?
Uh, Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Scott Willis.
Yes.
Cindy Spaljerry.
Yes.
Jake Gilbert.
Yes.
Mike Johns.
Yes.
Scott Frye.
Yes.
Troy Patton.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
We just know, Mr. Johns, that if you want it heard, and it's gonna change it all by the twenty-second, it needs to be, there's another public hearing requirement, publication by at least the twelfth.
By the twelfth, so.
So, they gotta get together quickly.
Yes. So, we all, we're all aware of that, we have to move quick. Need to get this resolved by the twelfth. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. First item of new business is ordinance twenty-one dash five zero, additional appropriation for the fire station lease. This has a council introduction this evening. I think, uh, Mr. Bertrand is gonna present this.
Counselors, this is a part of the, the transactional timeline as it relates to the fund, well, pardon me, the funding of the new fire station project. Uh, on the line this evening is Jim Crawford, Bond Counsel. He's serving as Bond Counsel for this project. And I will yield anything, it's just part of the, the approval process for them to go to the market for, to get the bond proceeds. Mr. Crawford, again, is online to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Todd. Just briefly, the statute requires that the building corporation own the ground in the buildings that are gonna be the subject of the bond issue. Uh, in accordance with the statute, to appraisals of the property, uh, the undeveloped land where, uh, that obtained, uh, the greatest of those two was one million, one hundred thousand dollars. The other one was a million, thirteen thousand dollars and change. Uh, so, the city will be receiving that amount of money in exchange for the deed for the property as part of the bond issue closing. And then the city will put that one point one million dollars into the project, and those funds need to be appropriated. So, that's the purpose of this ordinance, requires a public hearing. We will extend the notice to the newspapers tomorrow if you approve this tonight. And, uh, it'll be published, uh, for, for Friday of this week for a public hearing to be held at your next council meeting on the twenty-second of November.
So, there's no real action for you tonight, it's just an introduction. There'll be a public hearing at your next session, uh, in order to proceed with this, this step.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda, new, new business, ordinance twenty-one dash five two, Spring Water P U D. Uh, it's up for council introduction this evening. And Kevin? May I introduce the, uh, petitioner?
Yeah, just quickly, Mr. President, thank you. Item before you this evening is a changes zoning request for property on South Union. Uh, the petitioner here, Mr. Justin Moffett is here to present the introduction. Go ahead, Justin.
Good evening, Justin Moffett, on behalf of Old Town Design Group. This aerial photo here is of the Beauchamp property. You might be familiar with the sign that's been out front for years, the Beauchamp Antiques. Uh, Bob and Michelle, the longtime property owners, approached Old Town early this year and asked if we'd have interest in partnering with them on developing, uh, their, their home and, and property. Mr. Beauchamp had seen several developments we've done over the years and, and was, um, I guess impressed by them, and was hoping that we could collaborate with them to develop something special here. They, uh, I'm sure some of you who have been around the community for a number of years are familiar with the property, but, um, there's an antique business that operates, uh, kind of in the, the back property. And it's also their home. And so, we've been collaborating to figure out how we could, uh, bring a development to life here that would kind of preserve the best of the green space and provide opportunity for them to stay on the property and live on, in, in, uh, what is a beautiful, kind of a state home property uh, at the back and the east side of Cool Creek. So, Old Town has been working with, uh, Bob and Michelle for about a part of six months and, and kind of discussing, you know, what their goals are and trying to navigate, you know, what the market needs are and how we can work to, to make something special happen here on this unique property. With me here tonight is Ed Hamilton and another partner, Neil Garadia of Apollo Developers. Old Town has formed a joint venture partnership with Old Town, or with Apollo, and they're gonna share in the presentation tonight. But, uh, Old Town Design Group would be the home builder for this community, and Apollo would manage the land development activities for us. So, um, I'm gonna just, uh, give a little more detail and then turn it over to Ed to kind of explain the master plan, and, and then I'll wrap up with explaining some of the architecture. Uh, I know this is just an introduction, but because this is a unique property that's one of the larger undeveloped tracts in the core of, of downtown Westfield area, wanted to give a little more context at the introduction here tonight. But, um, as I mentioned, um, uh, the Beauchamps had seen some developments that we've done in the past. Particularly, they pointed out Jackson's Grant that's at a hundred sixteen and Spring Mill with, uh, mixed product types, all residential, but a mixture of townhomes and, uh, zero lot line or, or small lot, uh, infill residential, um, and, you know, some traditional frontload lots that allow for ranch-style homes. And really, they, they liked that kind of eclectic mix of residential types. It wasn't homogeneous, um, it really blended well together. So, that's what they were hoping we would accomplish here, and I, I think you'll be, uh, pleased with, with what we're putting forward. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Ed and ask him to kind of, uh, move through the slides and, and share a little more about the land development, how we put this together.
Justin, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You know, that's, uh, not very much elevated from Cool Creek. It's low ground. I was raised down there, and I've seen it flood. It's gonna be a Herculean task to change that.
Well, let me, um, I'm gonna use this ari- uh, aerial to explain, uh, the context and location to the audience, and then I'm gonna touch on that, and Ed's the expert, so I'm gonna let him speak to that just a little further. But just to give everyone, the community, a, a sense of, of reference here, bottom left, you'll see a hundred and sixty-first and U S thirty-one. Just move over, you know, not even a quarter mile, is Union Street that runs, uh, north-south. And then this property outlined in red is what we're here to discuss tonight. One of the, the challenges of being a developer is that, um, there are federal, state, local rules on flood management. We, I define it as, you know, um, preparing for apocalyptic scenarios. So, uh, if you were a developer twenty years ago, and I, I've actually been developing around seventeen years now. When I first started, the rules were more lenient than they are today, so I've witnessed a change.
In nineteen fifty-six, I saw a man in a rowboat.
I'm gonna take your word for it.
You'll have to.
The reality is, we're charged with planning for the absolute worst-case scenario. And, and the reality is, the ordinance is demand that we have base flood elevations of streets and finished floor heights of homes, uh, to protect the consumer. So, that's obviously a primary concern. But with all the new flood controls that have happened in our communities, it's actually slowed down the pace of water hitting our, our stream system. So, um, it's our job to manage that, uh, but I'm gonna ask Ed to explain a little further kind of how we plan this and, and what responsibility we'll take to mitigate those concerns.
Hello, Ed Hamilton with Apollo Developers. Um, and thanks, you kind of teed up the discussion here on, on floodplain, because this is a, this is a very, while it's a very challenging site from a floodplain perspective with Cool Creek, it's a great opportunity. As Justin said, this is something that could be very special with the natural features that do come along Cool Creek. You may have seen on the last slide, the project actually extends all the way down to a hundred and sixty-first street. So, in addition to the Beauchamp estate, uh, we've also arranged the remnant parcels from Lantern Park west of Cool Creek to be part of it to connect, create that connectivity between this project and a hundred and sixty-first street, with roundabouts going in, uh, Lantern Park two and south, uh, Lantern Commons to the west. It'll have some retail and, uh, a pedestrian bridge across it is proposed. So, uh, we're picking up a total of over a half a mile of creek frontage here as part of this project. Uh, you also notice there's about a seven and a half acres where the home and antique shop are located. Those are not part of the rezone. The, uh, home and estate will, will remain here. You probably saw the long drive that comes back here, that will also remain, so access to that home will be maintained, uh, as part of this project. So, um, stepping back, these challenges we do have, I'll start with the floodplain. The pink line here is the floodway. We are not putting any fill in this. This is a regulatory floodway that is determined by FEMA and, uh, regulated by the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. We do have some fill within the regulatory floodplain fringe in which we will mitigate within a two-plus acre pond right here. So, this will be done in accordance with Hamilton County survey area requirements as well as, uh, the Westfield requirements for compensatory storage. This same strategy was employed down here at Lantern Park. So, you can see where the pink dash line is here as well. And there would be, there's a small strip of property, uh, west of here where the compensa- the sto- compensatory storage was done. In addition, we have the traditional stormwater detention pond as part of the project. There's two of these proposed. So, that's the one challenge with the floodplain. Uh, there's also a stream that runs through this property that will be preserved. And, um, in addition to not just the creeks reserved, preserved, but the riparian corridors and all the mature trees will, a hundred percent of it will be preserved with the exception of, we do have a crossing here at the, at the, at the creek. So, we're taking great care and, and trying to preserve as much of the existing, uh, natural features as possible. So, the, um, the trail here is already existing along it. The, uh, the utility crossing's already here, there's already an outlet right here. This pond for the flood control is all done in an area that's currently farmed, so we're not taking out any natural features to put it in. So, that, that poses some challenges. We also have the Summit Lawn Cemetery to the north, which also, um, cre- creates some challenges. We're proposing a fifty-foot buffer, which not only will preserve the existing trees along it, but also proposes a six-foot, uh, six-foot berm with heavy landscaping along it to provide a, a buffer between the cemetery and the homes. So, um, surrounding us on the west is, is Lantern Commons, which is, although they haven't defined the exact, uh, development here, this section is proposed to have, and labeled with the As, is proposed to have, uh, senior facilities, it could be two to three stories, and below it, office space, two to three stories. So, the, uh, strategy we had here was traditional neighborhood development, um, with this being an infill site. We're doing a step-down transition with the architecture, starting with townhomes, three-story townhomes facing the, uh, the apartments up here and Lantern Commons. And we're stepping down to, as Justin mentioned, the forty-seven-foot alley-loaded homes, stepping down to sixty-two-foot frontload, single-family homes. And then, uh, Cool Creek itself creates a natural buffer between this project and, uh, the properties to the east. So, um, I'll move on to the next slide. This gives a better viewpoint of those, um, areas I mentioned. Down here is a roundabout that's proposed to be installed next year. This is the entire frontage of Lantern Commons. This is Lantern Park, which is installed here in the last six years. Uh, single-family ranch homes, very similar to the sixty-two-foot product that was shown in orange over here. The areas in green are mature wooded areas that we're proposing to preserve. There is about an acre and a half that we're gonna take out as part of the development. It's limited to a small section, right, island and trees right here, and a couple farm rows of trees right here, right here, and a little bit here. There's some fallow areas that we're letting, that traditionally weren't, um, wooded, but have gone fallow. Uh, mostly honeysuckle up here that we could clear it out, and then some areas back here. So, with that, over fifty percent of the project will be open space. A lot of it will be naturalized. The areas along this trail that we're proposing will all be planted with native vegetation. The, the floodplain comp storage pond will be naturalized with natural vegetation. So, this green belt that comes along Cool Creek will be maintained all the way through this project for over half a mile, through Liberty Park to the south, and eventually the connectivity all the way down to Cool Creek Park. The, um, the orange here is internal road, uh, sidewalks along the roads, which is typical of neighborhoods. We're also proposing the trail all along the frontage, Union Street. And lastly, we have a trail that runs through the project to provide, um, an, an amenity for the neighborhood. Other amenities include, there's kind of a, a beautiful little scenic point right here along Cool Creek that we had observed. We're showing an outlook here for, with benches for folks to sit and enjoy. And then a playground, a gazebo, and a fire pit up here along, that'll be built within the natural area. So, that's, uh, that's all I have to present. If anybody's in questions, Justin, sir.
I'm gonna finish with some architecture. Joe, we, we obviously take your concerns seriously, and I would say that what's unique about this development, and as Ed alluded to, we're showing about fifty-six percent open space in the development. That's not normal, and part of the reason that we're doing that is because we have to. I mean, we, we, we can't, um, do what we're talking about and provide the open space. And i- if we were to try to build on all of it, we would create more issues. And so, we're doing compensatory storage, so some of the areas where you see building pads, we will be, uh, doing some fill in there. We're not talking about five or six feet of fill, we're talking about a couple feet of pad fill. And so, that's where we're gonna balance the site and mitigate with some, the mitigation area on the two acres pond there.
Hey, Justin, can I, can I just interrupt you? It's good, um, before you get to the architectural stuff. First of all, you know, I always like everything you guys do, I mean, everything you've done, Carmel looks fantastic and, and so on. I, I am, I am concerned, not just with that, but, and I know Jeremy's not here, but, and, and maybe I'll, I'll ask Todd this, same thing openly. But, you know, further south from there, you know how it floods down there by the, that, uh, a hundred and fifty-sixth street? You know? The only, the only thing I would, my question would be is, you know, as you keep filling things in, it just pushes more water, obviously downstream, as it always does. But that, that area floods sometimes now. You know where it's at, where I'm talking about, Todd?
Yeah, it's, uh, by Cool Creek Park entrance.
Yeah.
And I think it's the C Pro Building there, that logo there.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, I mean, I mean, just to take all that into account, because, I, I, I mean, that's, that's an issue probably anyways, right? I mean, sorry.
Let me address this as a kind of layman here. Uh, I, I certainly am not a civil engineer, but I've done enough development, have enough layman's understanding how this works. Right now, there's no detention of the water that leaves this site that hits Cool Creek. It, it sheet flows off the site, um, at whatever pace God intended, okay? And so, the, when I talk about federal mandates that trickle down to state and local, they're designed so that we, we have to measure our water and make sure that we're not creating a negative. a negative impact downstream. And so we can't move water off the site faster than it currently leaves the site. And so we have to model off all of this and provide stormwater calculations for not just our site, but we have to calculate all of the adjacent properties, you know, what, what water hits our site, flows through our site, and hits Cool Creek. And so we have to measure all the, all the stormwater for surrounding land. So even if it's not our water, we still have to measure it, capture it, detain it, and so it doesn't hit Cool Creek at a faster volume than it currently hits it. So if, you know, nothing's perfect, but what we have seen over and over again is that it actually slows down water, bless you, from what currently hits Cool Creek. It will actually improve upon what's there today. And so that's a requirement. We can't pull a permit without proving that, once we do the calculations, that we actually prove upon the conditions that exist today.
Just to add that, as we sit here today, there's been, I think it's been quite some time since we've had a rain event that has flooded in that area with the US 31 project and in addition to our regional detention downtown. It stores that water and lets it, it kind of meters that flow. So I think it's been quite some time since we've had, you're right, it's low ground. In addition to the surveyor's office, Army Corps, DNR, a host of other bureaucratic entities will opine on this and give him direction. That'll cost him probably more money than he cares to spend, so.
The other, the other thing too is, some of these detention ponds, and you've got to hit my memory button there, are pretty deep. Some of them on 32 or 35 feet deep. And when you get a car off in one of those, if they're close to the road, like that one is shown, you're going to have some trouble.
Well, Joe, we do have an ordinance that requires developers to install barriers if their roadway is within X amount of feet of a pond.
But you remember when the Kroger, I don't know, there was some sort of pursuit from the Kroger parking lot, and they got in this one over here through the barrier, apparently. I don't know, but I don't know how they got there, but they did. The guy drowned, I think, actually.
Ultimately, it will be on us to prove that we meet the requirements of all the federal, state, local ordinances. And so you have a very solid ordinance, subdivision control ordinance, that mandates how developers have to move things forward. We have to prove that we can comply with that. And as Todd said, there's a lot of eyes that check that.
Having said all this, I still like your work, Justin.
Thank you. Well, I think what's special here, what's unique here, is that it is residentially zoned property. Bob and Michelle Beauchamp have the legal right to develop it in some fashion. And ultimately, they decided that while they still have control and can influence the outcome here, they wanted to see something special happen. And so I felt fortunate that they approached us and picked us to partner with them. And so I think the opportunity that we have here is to work together to, A, prove that it can be developed. I mean, that's obviously a legal requirement to get a construction permit. But separate from that, recognize that they do have property rights, and if we can check all those boxes on stormwater management, that their goal was to not just have it developed per the underlying zoning, but say, how can we do something unique here and have it be, you know, an asset for the community? We've taken a lot of time so far, so I'm going to speed through this next part, because I know we're going to spend more time with you here in the future. We'll be at the APC next month. Transitional architecture, that's a way of saying we're blending old and new. Candidly, my employees are, we employ a team of architects, and they're kind of tired of all the Craftsman cottagey-looking homes that we do around the community and have asked if we could do something unique here that brings a little element of modern. And so some typical materials you see on homes that we build throughout the community with, you know, the hardy siding and, you know, all the facade materials, all those are normal. But they want to promote an architecture that has some modern flair to it. So very traditional roof lines, gabled roof lines, you know, traditional dormers, but having more of, you know, clean lines. A lot of times, you'll see references on all the, you know, Pinterest and Houzz sites about Scandinavian architecture, and that follows this train of thought here. So this represents ideas that we would bring forth for townhomes. Keep in mind, we're Custom Builder Group, and so we're not bringing you, here's the cookie cutter production stuff that we're going to build 100 of. Our goal is to build something unique for each pod of the neighborhood. This represents alley-load products, so about 25 of the home sites are rear-load garages on alleyways. That was a comment I heard from somebody as we were going through the planning process. We would have the alleys be privately maintained but built to city standard. I know that's a concern that's been raised in the community. And so we also believe in curbing alleys when possible. It holds up the pavement better and reduces long-term maintenance. Even though they are privately maintained, it's better for residents. The other big factor, though, that we do is we make sure that in our HOAs, we escrow for any private maintenance upfront, so our residents aren't faced with a big capital burden down the road. But architecturally, falls that same theme of transitional, mixing traditional roof lines and elements with kind of some modern detail. And then finally, frontload, around 25, 30 of the home sites had frontload garages. Typically, our buyer is an empty nester looking for a ranch-type home, and so, you know, these offer pretty spacious main-level footprints. Most of our clients have basements, but story-and-a-half architecture is pretty typical. But again, all of this would be custom-designed, but the goal was to introduce a new concept of what we're calling transitional architecture. And we'll be going through this process in the next few months with the Airplane Commission and vetting their concerns as well before back in front of the council. But comments heard about concerns over stormwater management, we'll make sure that we can prove that we're able to handle that before we go any further here. But appreciate your time tonight and look forward to any comments you have.
Justin, you said it's currently zoned how?
It's a single-family residential classification, sir. Yes, sir.
It's not AGSF1?
I'll have to confirm that with staff.
I have a quick question. 113 new families, correct, in any one of the, you know, mix of these different products? All of the products are to own, yes? The townhomes are?
Everything's for sale, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Look forward to seeing you at the APC and seeing you come back here in a couple months.
And just for the record, that is currently zoned AGSF1.
The next item on the agenda is really, it's really just more of a council discussion, and I kind of wanted to update the council as to a meeting that I had with Mayor Cook last, last week, okay? We met on October 27th. We discussed a lot of different issues. I felt it was extremely productive meeting. One of the most important issues that we discussed in my mind was the status of ordinance 17-114, which is adopting fiscal policies and resolution, I guess both resolutions, resolution 20-100, which is the quarterly budget presentation and reconciliation resolution. So I've attached both of those for the review of the council, and I think you, I'm going to ask you to read through those as we move forward over the next couple of weeks. Ordinance 17-144 was adopted four years ago, and it really is an ordinance that identifies a reserves and liquidity policy for the city, a city investment policy, and a debt management policy. And then the other ordinance, 2100, is something that we did when we first took office here 22 months ago, almost 20, almost two years ago now, which was to have a strategy for monitoring and reviewing our quarterly budget versus actual expenses. Both of these resolutions were passed by the councils, respective councils, they were both supported by the administration. So when the mayor and I met, we discussed these as issues that I felt were important for the council and our duty as finance administration, if you will. And I was kind of surprised to learn that the mayor, from the mayor's perspective, the administration was unable to provide this information to the council. So we kind of talked through it and said it was probably would have to be a combination of the administration and the clerk together that would be necessary to provide this information to the council. So what I'm asking tonight is that our finance committee review these two resolutions over the next couple of weeks, see what's in them, is there, is, will that provide us with enough information to perform our fiscal duties for the city? Is there any other information that we need? And then to meet with the mayor and the clerk's office and to start to move forward. I'm taking, and I guess maybe I'm moving fast on this one, but I think that we need to move fast. We need to grab a hold of this so that come the end of this year, the middle, the end of January, we have a yearly finance report that addresses all this information from this year. I don't think we should kick the can down the road and say we're going to do this first quarter next year. I think this is something that we could work together as a team and get done the remainder of this year so that we do have reports that we deem necessary by the end of January. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Johns, just again, thank you, but to reiterate what we said, is we're perfectly happy to work with the clerk treasurer, the council, to generate the reports from our system of record NAV. So we're perfectly willing to cooperate through that system.
I deeply appreciate that, and I think I'm, again, I'm going to grab onto this as a new day and a new way of doing things, and I think working together, we can accomplish what we need to. That being said, I'm going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is any residents who wish to address the council, if they do so. We have three minutes of time. Do we have any cards for any residents?
Do not.
Okay, hearing none then. Clerk treasurer comments? Cindy, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody, I don't know if everybody's seen it or not, but I sent out an email today for, to all the council, RDA, RDC, I can't remember, Board of Public Works for the Audit Exit, November 17th at 10 o'clock. And if we do it at, all of them at the same time, we'll have to go to City Services. If you guys want to split it up, just let me know. And just wanted to let everybody know it's coming.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. City council comments? The Oversight Committee?
Open Gov meeting, which is an open meeting, or not Open Gov, but Oversight Committee. We'll be meeting Wednesday in the council chambers, 1:00. And it's a public meeting, so.
So it's a public meeting, so can all councilors attend in a public meeting?
Scott Willis will be dialing in, and he needs, he needs a portal to get, to get into that meeting, so have Kim set him up with a portal, because he's on marine training right now. But he told me he could dial into the meeting.
Okay.
All right. Manny, can all, can all councilors attend that meeting as a public meeting?
The Oversight Committee meeting?
Yes.
It would have to be separately, concurrently noticed as also a council meeting.
All right, all right.
So unfortunately not, I think today was the...
We can.
Yeah, I mean, you can obviously push the Oversight Committee meeting a day. You could accommodate it by a public notice tomorrow if that's feasible, I don't know.
I don't want to push that back. I think meetings...
Gotcha.
Okay, all right. Finance Committee?
Nothing.
Cindy Spojurek, do you have a report from the APC?
I do. Excuse my voice. Thanks, Mike. A little under the weather. The APC did meet November 1st. We approved the 2022 schedule of meetings. We had four public hearings, the development plan and primary plat for Sycamore Glen, and then PUDs. We had public hearings for landing at 161st, town run, and the courtyards at Spring Mill. And we are going to be having a training session with staff after the conclusion of business at our next meeting, which is the 15th. And also on the 16th will be our next ARPA committee meeting at 2:00 at City Hall. That's it.
Thanks, Cindy. I have no comments this evening?
I do not either.
Okay, well, then we will adjourn tonight's meeting.